Good evening and thank you for joining tonight's Telephone Town Hall hosted by Westminster's City Council. I'm Roger and I'll be your moderator tonight as we have a conversation with Mayor Nancy McNally and your city councilors. We are simulcasting tonight's event in Spanish and I'm gonna pause for a moment and ask city staff to make a quick announcement.
Saludos. Si desean participar en español, por favor oprima la asterisco y luego cero.
Alright, thank you. Before we begin, I want to take a moment to tell you about the format for tonight's Town Hall. If you would like to share your thoughts with us or ask a question, please press star three on your telephone keypad and you'll be transferred to an operator who will take down some basic information. Once the operator notes your information, you will return to the call and can listen to the conversation until you are called upon to ask your question live. We realize that some on the call just want to listen, but if you do have a question, we invite you to start submitting those questions now. Press star three. We want to get people in line early and be ready to go. Feel free to ask about the issues that are most important to you. Again, press star three now if you already know your question and this is the same process to follow throughout the call. If you hear something that generates a question, go ahead and press star three. Now, before we jump into our conversation, I would like to turn the call over to Mayor Nancy McNally. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Roger. We are happy to be hosting another Town Hall and our first Town Hall in a long time. The point of tonight's format is to ensure residents who are not able to livestream or attend the event in person are still able to engage with City Council. Tonight's discussion is going to be focused on what you, the residents of Westminster, think is important. City Council would like to hear any suggestions or ideas you would like to share and answer the questions you want answered. You will drive tonight's conversation and we appreciate you taking the time to join us. Remember star three to ask a question. Now I will turn it over to a City Council to introduce themselves.
This is Mayor ProTim Dave Demont and I would like to also thank you for joining us tonight. This is exciting to be with you. I would also remind you, if you didn't hear, to please remember if you want to ask a question to press star three.
Hi there. My name is Bruce Baker and I'm one of the councilors on the council and I forgot to unmute myself, so I'll take a little getting used to this too. I was elected in the 2021 election. I had previous served on council for four years back from 2013 to 2017. I would encourage you to ask embarrassing and difficult questions because those are the best ones anyway and to do that, you push star three. Next.
Good evening. This is Counselor Lindsay Emmons. Thank you for joining us and please remember to participate. Press three. Start...star three, excuse me.
Good evening, everybody. This is Counselor Sarah Normella and I'm looking forward to hearing your questions. So remember to press star three.
And Counselor Rich Seymour, again, thanks for joining us tonight. We are getting some questions coming up, so that's great. We know that the system's working, but if anything pops in your mind, star three and we want to hear from as many of you as possible over the next hour. Thank you.
Alright, I think that's the whole group with us tonight. We are missing one council member. Oh, well, let's go ahead. We have a new city manager, relatively new city manager. Go ahead, Mark, and introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Mark Freitag. I'm the city manager. I've been here for eight months so far. Glad to be here, coming from Wisconsin and loving Colorado so far, so look forward to your questions. As always, the city wants to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. Please contact us with your concerns, thoughts, ideas, and anything that comes to mind this evening. Look forward to talking with you. Bye.
Alright, as all of our council members reminded you, press star three to get in line. We have several questions, but we have a full hour to fill, so we want to hear from as many of you as possible. And I'm gonna have our announcement about our Spanish translation one more time. Austin?
Saludos. Si desean participar en español, por favor oprima la asterisco y luego cero.
Okay, so let's go to our first question tonight from Esne. Esne, you are live. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Esme. I just wanted to know, are there going to be any more new bike trails?
This is Counselor Rich Seymour. Thank you for asking that question. I took this answer because I am an avid bike rider here in Westminster and right now, our parks, recs, and library staff is looking at a new master plan and how we can get some of those connections made. We've also bought some more open space in this last year that will help us create even more trail connections. That's a great question. Thank you.
Okay, next is Mary Lee. Mary Lee, go ahead.
I'd like to know... Oh, oh. Go ahead. I'd like to know if they're ever gonna open up the emergency clinic there on 112th and Sheridan.
Mary Lee, this is Nancy, Mayor Westminster, and I appreciate your question. I live close to there. I attended a grand opening in the other half of that emergency center. They are doing some things for treatment for mental health and students that need those resources and I was told that they were hoping to get it opened, the emergency side, by July. So I am going to look at my city manager and see if he has any update or we can get back to you and share what the schedule is.
And thanks, Mayor, for passing that over. I honestly don't have any new updates, but we can certainly follow up with you and so we look forward to doing that and we'll just move on then this evening.
Alright, thank you all again. A reminder, press star three to get in the queue. We have some great questions already and we've got a few more coming up. Let's hear from Deanna next. Deanna, go ahead.
Deanna Brown. I just wanted to...I just wanted to know with the recent shootings that have taken place less than like five, 10 minutes from my house, there's been several and several weeks, there just seems to be more and more crime in our city and I'm just wondering what you guys have in the works for making some adjustments or doing something to try to get a handle of this. It's a beautiful city and it's kinda getting overrun.
Hey, Deanna, this is Dave Demont and it's a great question and I appreciate the concern. I will tell you that obviously we can't always control what people do and their actions when they decide to commit crime. However, this City Council has put a focus on public safety. There has been a rise in crime unfortunately across the nation and we have not been shielded from that by any means. Specifically to reducing shootings or any kind of crime, really, some of the things that we've put in place are about presence of the police. Worked with the police department as far as different tools that they can have. They don't necessarily all go after shooting, but one of the other things that's really important, I think, for people to realize is the things that happen at our state level and how they affect our city. Over the recent handful of years, policing has certainly seen some changes. I am pleased to see though that our staffing levels have increased and we're doing very well at getting police officers out on the streets. So we'll continue to focus on the things that we can address crime, but part of it is presence, but also I think that as far as what citizens can do is making sure that if you see things that are off, that you're calling our police department so that they can respond and be more proactive if you see something that doesn't seem right to you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Let's hear from Charles next. Charles, go ahead.
Hi, yes, my name is Charles. My name is Charles and my question concerns the new water treatment plant. My understanding is that the original plan was scrapped for a new plan that saves $100 million and I was curious as to what was being cut from the original plan to find that savings and I guess what would be lost by letting the new plant that costs $100 million less. Thank you.
Hi there, Charles. Well, this is Bruce Baker and well, the water plants is one of the issues that we had some conflict on council about. We did not all see that in a uniform way. We decided to essentially follow the same plan of Water 2025. The $100 million touted savings was saved because we cut the capacity of the plant from 30 million gallons a day to 15 million gallons a day. I was on, okay, the minority side of that issue. I think it was foolish. I think we had better options, but I did not really...I mean, to prevail and I think another counselor will give you the majority point of view.
Counselor Demont, you want to take that over?
Thank you. I appreciate my colleague's point of view on it, however, I don't agree. The savings that we had was because part of the pause that we did as a city when the election happened, because this was certainly the water plant as well as the water rates were an issue in the last election. That pause enabled us to look at what we were doing and staff came back and their findings were that the plant was actually oversized and so it was more than what we needed. If you look at the entire system, and I would encourage folks to realize that it is an entire system, we are getting redundancy with this, but we're getting it at a different price point that allows us to be able to make it more affordable. Where the prior plan was to continue to fund the plant, that we, according to staff, don't need one of that size off of water rate increases. This enables us to not do that and have a more reasonable rate that really matches increases year to year with the actual cost of the goods going up, which none of us are shielded from in the economy. So we do have to cover those and maintain good water quality standards, but that savings, if you look at the way that it is, and it's obviously a larger topic that any of us would be happy to discuss with you offline, it's about having a balanced system that we've built in redundancy that saved money and prepares us for the future of the city.
Okay, again, star three to get in the queue for a question or comment. Emily is next. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Emily Brooks. My question is about water conservation and in particular, former city manager Bill Christopher had a great column in this week's Westminster Window about some opportunities that he sees as he looks around the city for the city to become more of a leader for residents and others who pass through the city with regards to water conservation and reducing the amount of turf that is being irrigated. Now, I know that turf is being irrigated in many cases with gray water, but I think his point is one of being a role model with demonstrating other ways to landscape that are more water friendly. I know that former city manager Bill Christopher was one of the folks that you brought in to the Water Roundtable as part of the decision making on the water treatment plant. So I think his voice is a respected one. I wonder if any of you would care to comment on the suggestions that he has and his point that he doesn't see Westminster as a trendsetter on the important issue of water conservation.
Sarah, thank you. Let's let Emily...or let's let the...Dave, I think is gonna start with this. Go ahead.
Hey, Emily, thanks for joining us tonight. It's good to hear from you again. Certainly is an important topic because water conservation in a state like Colorado is very, very important, not just for our own city, but for the whole region. So I did not read that particular article and from the fact that I was the first one to grab it after looking around to see if anybody else read that article or not, I can't speak directly to the things that he recommended, but I'd happy to look back at it or even call Mr. Christopher myself as I do think he's a good resource and has been a good continued friend to the city of Westminster. But I would point to the City of Westminster's website, which is cityofwestminster.us. There are a lot of different programs that the city has that we're trying to help folks if they want to find ways to conserve water, from our turf buyback program to different methods that you conserve water. And the other thing that I would mention is the city has been reevaluating parks and open space and where we have turf as we are probably the biggest user of water resources when it comes to outdoor irrigation. And so that is certainly an area that we're looking at. Some different things that I quickly mentioned are using more natural grass are things that we are starting to do as well as upgrading irrigation systems at our golf courses that allow us to be more efficient with the water. And I would point back to the water plant. There is gonna be some efficiencies with the new water plant that allow us to better maintain and process water in a way that we don't have as much waste when we process the water. So appreciate the question.
Alright, great questions again. Thank you very much. We're going to Vicki next. Go ahead.
Hi. Hi, my question is around housing and I know there's a lot of apartment complexes going up and I totally understand the need for that. My question is, is there a requirement or a ratio standard for when developers build these units of how many of them are affordable versus maybe a luxury?
Hi, Vicki, this is Sarah Normella. That's a great question and we currently do not have a requirement for any number or any percentage of these units to be affordable. We do have an overall goal to diversify our housing stock so that we can have multiple levels of income or incomes afford housing in the city, but we usually work with developers to create specific housing projects that do cater to certain levels of income. So we have multiple senior, affordable senior projects and one of them is the Heritage at Church Ranch and that's near Old Wads and Church Ranch, yeah, 100th and Old Wads. So that's an example of what we have built and we have many different projects in the works that will hopefully add to the number of affordable units in the city, but again, we do not have a requirement.
Well, this is Bruce Baker and this was another issue where there was a really division on really council. I was on the majority side of this one and it was about the comprehensive plan. And in the comprehensive plan we just passed, we have really lowered the amount of apartment houses, multifamily, that we are planning for our city. But you know, before you get too excited about that, there are already, I think in the neighborhood of 7,000 additional living units allowed, of which I think 3,000 of them are single-family homes and 4,000 of them are multifamily homes. I may not be exactly right, but that's the ballpark that I remember. But this is on top of the past few years where like the growth in apartment, multifamily has been unbelievable. There was an article saying that Westminster was among the top 25 cities in the nation to add multifamily housing. We're sitting at about 118,000 residents now and so if you had 7,000 more residents to it, that could easily add 15,000, 16,000 more people to, I mean, the city. And because we've added so many multifamily, we have radically changed the makeup of Westminster. I would imagine, you know, 20, 30 years ago, we were probably 70% single-family owner-occupied homes and we are at about 48,000 total dwelling units in the city now, of which only 31,000 are single-family homes. So we're rapidly approaching a 50/50 split between owner-occupied and renters.
Thank you, Counselor. Let's go to Teresa next. Go ahead. Hold on, Teresa, we're having a delay in our clicking. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. My husband and I take a walk over behind City Park pretty much every day and we were wondering for the condition of that pond, is it...because it does have an odor. Actually, the last few years, it has kind of a foul odor this side by the Weston Hotel. Is that common or normal standards for a lake? And there's a lot of algae too.
Mr. Seymour.
This is Rich Seymour. Thank you for bringing that up. I'm not sure if you're talking about the full pond or the small pond that's right behind the Weston, which is more of a runoff area and it doesn't get aerated. The large City Park Lake Pond does have aeration in it, but I do know that we've had some upkeep delays because of the sewer project that's going on through there. So staff will take a look at that. All these issues are being recorded so that they can be followed up on, but I appreciate that fact, especially from the smell standpoint. I do know a lot of birds use that and they hang out there and there's that result of it too. But if it's the small one right behind the Weston, that does have a little bit of an issue because it's more of a drainage holding area and eventually that pond will no longer be there. So that'll clean that up permanently. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Counselor Seymour. Alright, a reminder please, star three to get in line to ask a question. Great question so far. We're about 20 minutes into the call, so you've got lots of time to take your questions left. Lindsay...or Joanna is next. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Joanne Price and I was calling just to see what the build-out of the population is and I know they mentioned about the apartments and stuff. I know people are really upset how much growth there is been in the city and what is being done about it and I was just wondering what the plan was. They've obviously moved the build-out numbers to be higher now than what they used to be with all the growth, but I was wondering if you guys had a build-out or a population growth plan?
Yeah, thank you, Joanne. This is Counselor Lindsay Emmons. That's a great question. So we just actually got updated numbers as of Monday and I don't have that in front of me, the specifics. Let me look through our city manager because I have it written down. Oh, I must guess it. 118,940 is the current population and the projected build-out is identified in our 2040 comprehensive plan and it states that I believe that we would be at build-out at 125,000 roughly and that is a decrease in the plan before that, which was set at about 135,000, 140,000. So it has...we have decreased it in the past two years within the comprehensive plan. So no more...well, the projection is 125,000 at build-out. Now, that goes back to housing requirements. Council just put forward a couple of weeks ago, a housing study that will be conducted by staff and that looks at the housing needs and requirements that it will take to build out the rest of Westminster. So every couple of years, we conduct this study that holistically shows what the need is for our city specifically, which addresses affordable housing, attain homeownership, and rentals. So keep that in mind in its entirety, but thank you for the question.
Alright, next up is Gary. Go ahead, Gary.
Hi, this is Gary. My question deals with the old Dickman property located just west of Pierce Street on 92nd Avenue. Question is, when will that property be cleaned up? It was stated early that late last fall it would be completed, but it's still there. So just if you can give me your ballpark timeframe, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. This is Mayor McNally and we get a lot of questions with that property and unfortunately, it took a while to get the property. It was Jefferson County's property. It just took time to get that transferred and we are in the process now. Some of the hazardous materials need to be taken care of and our timeline is by the end of the year it will be finally completed. Thank you for the question.
Alright, Bill is next. Thanks for holding so long. Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Bill. I've been a resident of Westminster for 40-plus years. It's a great city to live in and I had a couple of comments. First of all, I want to compliment our police department, our law enforcement. I think we have a great force here. I do want to feel comfortable that they're getting paid enough and that they have enough staff. I do not want to see this city turned into a war in some of the other suburbs in this metro area and have the crime get out of hand. I'd rather see it nipped and butted up front.
Alright. Rich, do you have any comment on Bill's comments?
Absolutely, Bill. Our police department greatly appreciates that and we appreciate those citizens that support them. As far as wages and benefits, this council has been committed to public safety. It is the number one issue on our biannual survey that our residents appreciate their police and fire and EMS and council has tried to make Westminster the employer of choice. As you've probably heard, there's been some shortages in police departments around the metro area and across the country, but we're working diligently to make sure that we have the pay packages, the benefits, the training, and the equipment to bring in the absolute best.
Okay. Alright, thank you for that. We are going next to Jeremy. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Hi, yeah, actually I think most of the questions I had were answered. I was concerned about the water treatment plant that was going to be built and if there's any updates on the status of its development.
Hello, this is Counselor Sarah Normella. So we are in the process of working on getting a construction management contract to help us flesh out the construction process for our new water treatment plant and that is going to be located along the Westminster Boulevard site that we purchased and it's not actually...I just wanted to clarify that it's not open space. It's actually privately owned and we have been working with the owner to purchase that property for many years, so that's hopefully helpful. Remember to press star three if you have questions.
Alright, next up is Matthew. Go ahead. Thank you for holding.
Hi, my name's Matthew. I'm new to Westminster. I'm one of, I guess, thankful apartment renters here. I've been loving the community and I've got my library card and voter registration and all that, but I was wondering how else I could get involved in the community.
Thank you for that question, Matthew, and it is a great one. This is the mayor and there are so many ways. First, we do have a volunteer coordinator here at City Hall. Her name is Martha Hines and the general number is 303-658-2400. Just ask for Martha Hines. She has a list of anything throughout the city where people need help, like the historical society, we just put in that we need volunteers for tour people. So she gets that from everybody within the city of who needs help. Some of it is in the police department, some of it could be the fire department, it could be in any department that they need help. So don't hesitate to call her. Also on our website, you'll see our boards and commissions and we have applications there and you would fill that out and send it back to our city clerk and we then, when it's time to interview people for those boards and commissions, we interview and then select people to get on those boards and commissions. We also have the Fire Academy coming up this fall and we also have the Police Academy coming up. So I think those are all on the website also. If not, just call fire department or the police department, non-emergency number, and they will get you in contact with the right people to be able to sign up for those classes. And after you take the Fire Academy and Police Academy, they have alumnis, which then you can get involved that way. So thanks again for that question and don't forget star three to ask a question. So thanks again for that question, and don't forget star three to ask a question.
Thank you for that. Mayor, again, star three. Kathy and Jennifer are standing by, ready to get you in the queue. So this is a great opportunity. You've got the entire City Council here and the City Manager, ready to take your questions and comments. So press star three. Karen is next. Go ahead.
Yeah, my question is about the water treatment plant. There's this idea that we're working with the owner of the property. The reality is we're taking the owner of the property to court in order to mandate that he sell the property for the water treatment plant, which is a whole different dynamic than us. But my question is, why are we not using the state legislature rule or some legislation that allowed us to allocate fifteen percent of all new development towards affordable housing? And this would be affordable housing that is not distinct from regular housing?
Karen, unfortunately, you... Yep, you fell off the call. Who wants to go ahead and take that? Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, we obviously appreciate Karen's continued participation. Covered a lot of ground there, specifically around affordable housing. There is some state funds that we actually did opt to participate in. I'm not sure, since she got cut off, exactly what her question was. But I would reiterate something that we heard earlier in the night, that we have a housing assessment study that's going to be going out soon. And it's, I think, the one that we have currently was done either in fourteen or fifteen, so we're due to do that. And it's important for us to have some balance in housing options. And so like, in terms of affordable housing, this council has been shown to focus on not just affordable, but also attainable, because we need to make sure that we're addressing what most of the region has missing, which is the missing middle. So you can see that recently, we've approved some different condos in different areas. But I would also encourage you to go to, again, to the cityofwestminster.us website, and there's a whole section around affordable housing and a lot of information on it, as well as different developments across the city that maybe you're not familiar with, that you can see kind of what we've done over time. The other thing that I would remind you is to go ahead and press star three with your questions if you haven't already. Also, if we get towards the end, we've been told that they will take those questions and staff will follow up with you. So if you see the clock ticking down, don't be afraid to still hit star three so that we can capture your question and somebody can get back with you.
All right, we have a question from our Spanish simulcast. It's from Francisco. He asks, what are you doing about auto theft and street racing in the city? Would like to take that. Couple people. We'll start with Bruce or with Rich. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Rich Seymour. Council recently passed a series of laws that will address locally at our municipal court catalytic converter thefts, street exhibitions, street racing, and part of the package is identifying vehicles that are problems. And we made a decision to allow civil impound of those vehicles who are causing the problem. A warrant has to be issued, and they have an opportunity to have that reviewed, but we need to work together with other jurisdictions to get these people off of our street. Very important to report street racing. It's easy to do. Reportstreetracing.com, and you can give that information. And our officers and other departments are trying to track down these, especially the organized groups.
This is Mayor Protem Demat. Just to follow up on that, that work was... I had to give a lot of kudos to our staff. We worked with our city attorney's office as well as our staff, and they worked with the court in order to figure out, how could we better address those concerns and issues for the residents? And that's what they brought back. The other thing I just wanted to mention that we did, we worked with our partners at the State House this legislative session and encouraged them to help us with state-level laws. And I know that two of our representatives from our delegation, Senator Rachel Zenzinger and House Rep. Shannon Byrd, both worked on the bill that made it a felony to steal any car, and we thank them for that help. I know that they work closely with our team here to make sure that at the state level we can find ways to work with them, because a lot of those state laws really help us address things as far as crime in our city and state.
All right, let's go back to the phone and hear from Peggy next. Go ahead. Peggy, hold on. We've got a delay on the computer. There it goes. All right, now you're live. Go ahead, Peggy.
Good evening, and I thank you for being here to answer our questions. I've lived here for forty-six years, and I live right off of Eighty-Eighth and Wadsworth, which ties right into the street racing, which we have every night going down Eighty-Eighth. And the other thing is, I wonder about the mall. I was here when they started it, and then it died, and now they're trying to get it going again. And I understood there was going to be a mix of retail and housing. Well, all I see is hundreds of apartments. And all of these apartments get on Eighty-Eighth. And all the way from Ninety-three, in the morning, the track of it going, coming all the way down to get to the boulder, I can't even get out of my house. I get to the corner, and then there's nowhere for me to go because it's bumper to bumper to bumper. Is there going to be any relief on Eighty-Eighth to get to the boulder from any other area? And other than that, I love Westminster. I've loved living here. I think you've always been cooperative. I love our police department and our fire department, and I hope the people that follow me here will enjoy this city as much, but they need to do something with the apartments. I mean, if we're going to be apartment living only, then that needs to be advertised. Good luck. Thank you for your help.
Hey there, Peggy. Well, this is really Counselor Baker, Bruce, you know, Baker. And you see the new downtown the way I see the new downtown, though this is another one of those contentious issues on really council. We have been following the exact plan for the new downtown for ten years, and my point of view is it's a failure, a big failure. It was, well, originally cast to have a huge amount of retail plus a huge amount of office. And as we all know, there's no office. And we just had an office offer that had been pending for the last three years, and they backed out of it. And office space after COVID, has it changed? I think we should look at what we can do with the mall, because I don't want it to be nothing but hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of apartments. And right now, that's all it is. And the even tragic, the worst part, is that the city has actually cut down lanes around the new downtown. You know that we cut down Harlan from a four-lane street to a two-lane street, and we just had a thing where we're going to take some of the lanes off Ninety-second. So I think we're moving in the wrong direction. I am with you, but of course, there's other points of view.
Hi, Peggy. This is Sarah Narmala. As you may or may not know, I actually worked on the downtown since 2011. I was formerly a staff member with the City of Westminster, and I led the visioning and planning for the downtown. And so I have a... and the implementation of it. So I also helped to build the very first phase, what you see there. And so I know quite intimately what it takes to build a project of that size. And I want to emphasize that it does take a long time. It doesn't just happen overnight to change a site that was a dead mall to bringing in a lot of different real estate markets that have never been proven there. So it takes time, and we started with residential because retail waits for residential density to be there. Otherwise, it's not going to be successful. So the most important part of that area is to get residences there, both apartment rentals as well as ownership. And so that's what you're seeing right now. And then the retail is starting to fill out. Yes, it's true, we were working on getting office because we certainly want to have a diversity of uses on that site. The vision was to have a lot of office on that site. With COVID, that certainly put a dampener on office everywhere, and so we're waiting to see how the office market comes back or in what shape and form it comes back. So the important part of the downtown is to continue to have people visit it and to continue to build out the projects that have been identified there and to get people living there to support the retail and the destination that it is and will become. The traffic, we've done over the years, a lot of traffic studies in the area, and we... The peak that we experienced with the mall is very similar to when the downtown's fully built out, the amount of traffic that you'll see on Eighty-Eighth and Ninety-second. The only change that was done includes Harlan, which was overbuilt, so it's safer now. That's why it was moved to one lane in each direction. And Ninety-second, the improvement along that street was actually done as a safety improvement, because we had some issues with the lane reductions. And we just did the whole Sheridan Bridge improvement, which should really improve traffic in that area, because we widened Sheridan. So we're trying to get cars to move where they should. And I will just say one more thing, that it takes, again, time to build out. We've had areas like Rhino in Denver that is still building out, and that started twenty years ago. So just give us time, and we will get Rome built. Thanks.
This is Mayor Protem Demat. First, I'd remind you to press three if you want to ask a question. We're nearing the end of this, but again, they'll return your call if we don't get to it. But I did wanted to correct a couple of things real quickly. There is owner-occupied townhomes that are in the new downtown. There are another block of owner-occupied townhomes that are getting ready to be developed, as well as condos, which condos is something that hasn't been built in the city for decades. And that is a good entry point into ownership. And I think the balance of the downtown is one thing that I do agree with. I think that there is a lot of discussions that this council also is continuing to have. So I don't know that I would agree that the plan is the same as it's been for ten years, because there's been a lot of people throughout the time and different staff. And it continues to be a breathing, living thing. And I think with the block-to-block development, the last thing I would say is you probably continue to see that as time goes on and, you know, we go into the future of the city.
All right, Jesse is next. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Jesse. Everything I've heard on this call so far is for the northern part of the city, but what about the south part? I mean, the flower boxes on Seventy-second Avenue are all dilapidated, and there's no flowers in them, there's nothing but bushes that are dying. Also, England Park, what happened with England Park? It's nothing but weeds. And the traffic between Utica and Sheridan on Seventieth Avenue wasn't so bad until they built Walmart, which we did not want, and put a light there. And so we got speeders up and down there, and nobody does anything about it. This is the third time I've called on it. So what's the deal with that stuff? Can you stop this traffic or have it rerouted to where it should be?
Jesse, this is Rich Seymour. Thanks for all of those questions. I'll try to take them in order. England Park, I've seen the drawings of it. There are four million dollars that is going to be put into that. It's not a study. It's being drawn up right now. It's part of the bond issue that our residents voted for this last election to improve our parks, and so that project is moving ahead quickly, and it will be absolutely amazing. Traffic is an issue throughout our entire city, and it is probably the number-one email that we get on council. And I will tell you that it is being addressed. Our new chief, Halbert, has taken that issue seriously, and the number of police traffic stops over the last two months have increased exponentially. So we are stopping people, and we are holding them accountable. And the goal is to change people's behavior. That's really what that's about. You know, some of the bad behavior, you can't change people. And as far as the traffic study, honestly, I'd have to look at that one, and we can get some issues answered on that as we move forward. So thank you for those questions.
All right, we have another question from our Spanish simulcast. It comes from Alana. She asks, what neighbors or my neighbors won't mow their lawns or maintain their weeds? What can I do about it? That's off the cuff. Who wants to take that? City manager?
Yes, this is Mark Freitag, City Manager. And I would tell you, if you have neighbors that are not keeping their lawns to standard and properly upkept, please call the City Codes Department. They will follow up and open up an inspection ticket and then enforce the requirements, whatever that height may be. But we will certainly get that number to you so that you can contact that number. Okay?
Mark, do you know that? Do you want to give that number out? What's the main line to the city?
Yes, it is three zero three, six five eight, four four three two.
All right, thank you very much. Let's hear from Mary next on the phone. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I would like the definition of affordable housing.
Hello there, Mary. Well, this is really Counselor Baker, and you have addressed the question perfectly. There is no definition of affordable housing. It's basically become a really political word where anyone can read anything into it they want. In my opinion, Westminster, between nineteen seventy and two thousand, in those three decades, when we grew from a city of twenty-five thousand people to a hundred thousand people, you know, twenty-five thousand people a decade, and that's probably roughly thirty thousand homes were built, they were all affordable homes. They were all affordable homes. And affordable homes, in my opinion, is set by the marketplace. And when we had owner-occupied homes with FHA loans and VA loans and decent jobs, it was one market. And now that when we have BlackRock buying private homes and Airbnb renting out party homes and stuff like that, it's changed the whole thing. But there's a difference of opinion on council, and now one of my fellow counselors will give her view.
Hi, this is Sarah Narmala. Luckily, I work in this industry, and I... There is actually a definition to affordable housing. And affordable housing is any... It's housing that is aligned to incomes. And so, for instance, the HUD, which is our National Housing and Urban Development Department, actually sets standards and measures of area median incomes within every county. We're in two counties, so we have two different area median incomes. Overall, for the City of Westminster, that area median income is eighty thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. And the way that affordable housing works is that it's often set at a certain percentage of that area median income. So we have projects in the community that cater to multiple levels. We have some that are at eighty percent of the area median income. And to give you an example, that means that for a two-bedroom apartment, you're paying two thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars for that unit. And for a hundred percent of the area median income, it's saying that people can afford two thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars a month for that same two-bedroom apartment. We have projects as well that utilize low-income housing tax credits and other funding resources in the state that provide lower AMIs, which is area median incomes. And so those are at sixty percent and below. At sixty percent, your monthly rental rate would be one thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And you can imagine, a lot of people, I mean, my mom included, is on a very small and limited income, and it's thirteen hundred dollars a month that she can afford. So it... There are a lot of people in our community that cannot afford higher rents, and so that's what affordable housing is meant to do, is to give them options.
This is Mayor Protem Demat. I'll be really, really brief on this, but you've heard a couple of different things.
One thing that I'll point back to is the market and the mix that we're doing with the comprehensive plan. We've approved some big developments such as the Uplands. There are owner-occupied things coming to the downtown. We just recently heard about some owner-occupied opportunities in Bradburn. All those things go into those market-driven affordability that we haven't seen in the region, because stock will help bring down the prices.
Okay, let's go to John next with a question. Go ahead.
Hello. Hello, good evening. Can, can you tell us how the city is going to be addressing the pair of nesting eagles that's over at the Highland Ponds, which is where they proposed new water treatment facility is being built? How will that be handled? How will, how will we preserve the eagles' nest and their offspring? Thank you.
Hi, John. This is Mark Freitag, city manager here. And as with any development project or any construction project, we'll make sure that the city complies with all requirements and any guidance outlined in the National Environmental Policy Act, which is sometimes referred to as NEPA. And we go through a NEPA review for those kinds of projects. And so I would just offer that the city loves its eagles and I'm confident that we'll find a way that we can coexist on that site with that nesting pair. But thank you very much for the question. Thank you. Bye-bye.
We have another question from our simulcast. It's from Joanna. What is the city going to do about Sheridan Green Elementary? Mayor McNally?
That's my neighborhood. So we have had our first meeting and City Manager Freitag just gave us a long list of all of the things that were said at that meeting. And staff is now collating those and trying to prioritize, looking at what community said they would like it to be, why they would like it to be that way, and what the neighborhood's vision was for that school. So there is another meeting scheduled in August, August 24th. And we hope that everyone will show up to that to hear what staff has heard, what the recom, or what the priorities that they heard are and the next steps after that. So stay engaged and we hope to see you August 24th. Thank you.
Okay, Deanna is next. Go ahead.
I wanted to know, at the Home Depot off of 88th and Wadsworth, there is a police officer that is being used as a security guard all hours that the facility is open. And I wanted to know if that is a, a good use of our police department? And are, as taxpayers, are we paying for that?
Hi, Deanna. This is Counselor Lindsay Emmons. You know, Home Depot has contracted with the city to hire police officers who are off-duty at a contracted rate at the expense of Home Depot. So the opportunity to hire officers in this capacity is open to anyone or any business. And then the person or the company that completes the contract with the city, the job opportunities will be listed at the police department. So they may or may not be filled. And it is at the cost, again, of the person who is hiring the officer at the contracted rate. The city does not use taxpayer dollars or fund the officers in this capacity. So thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on that. As a child of a police officer, I can tell you that police officers oftentimes very much appreciate those opportunities to make extra money doing their trade and protecting their communities. I know, for example, my dad worked off-duty at Broncos games for 15 years and helped pay for Christmas. So I know our officers sometimes often appreciate those opportunities.
All right, let's take one more question from Michelle. Michelle, go right ahead.
I would like to thank everybody, hello. I would like to thank everybody for doing this. This has been very, very informative. And what my issue is, is I've lived here since the 1990s and I used to swim during the winter up on 104th at that pool, the City Park Pool. And they have since taken out, like you could, they put like one lap lane in there during recreation swim so that you could just drop in and swim. And unfortunately, now they've taken it out and sometimes you can't even swim in the swimming fitness center, because they have swim team and swim lessons and everything else. And unfortunately, I've been disabled by COVID and that's the only exercise I can do. And I really have no alternative. So I'm just not even, I'm not even able to walk right now. And so swimming laps is the only thing I can do. And I'm not able to do that right now, because there's no alternative.
Anyone want to provide a little feedback on that?
Hi, Michelle. City Manager Mark Freitag here. I'm not aware of a, the lap swimming being removed there at the, the pool. But I can certainly have our Parks, Rec and Libraries team follow up with you. They can give you some of that background and, and, you know, essentially maybe provide some other options that would be available. But thank you very much for the question and we will certainly follow up with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This has been a great call and we certainly appreciate all those terrific questions. We have just a few minutes left. Mayor McNally, do you have some final thoughts tonight?
I just want to say thank you to everyone for joining us tonight. We enjoyed hearing from you and appreciate your participation. If you didn't get a chance to ask a question, we invite you to join us at our next town hall, which will be held in person on Thursday, September 21st, at Crown Point Academy. We'll be sharing the details of that event on our website, social media pages, and the Westy newsletter in the coming weeks. If you don't already get the Westy, we encourage you to visit our website, www.cityofwestminster.us and sign up to receive the monthly newsletter. We loved hearing your questions tonight. Thanks for being with us. And Roger?
All right, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Westminster, stay safe, stay healthy. We really appreciate you joining us tonight. And have a good evening.